...for 2020 awards and where they came to order. I don't know if this is a log that we will do in education for.
Thank you, Mr. Dowers. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for loving us and blessing us, and Lord, thank you for hearing our prayers. And I thank you for these board members adopting these and their mission here tonight to serve the students and families of Coffin County, Lord. And I know that it works sometimes stressful and demanding, and I just thank you for their time and their patience as they work through making tough decisions. And Lord, I just ask you to bless our efforts tonight, and let the things that you do and say be pleasing at your side. In the name of my prayer. Amen.
That's been motioned to talk to agenda. Grace, stop from explaining. Dangerous need to be made. All clear?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have a school update from Westside Elementary School. And our principal, she is under the weather and couldn't be here with us, so we have our assistant principal here. You want to introduce yourself?
Yes, sir. I'm Heather Law. I'm assistant principal, Westside Elementary. And I do want to thank you all for allowing me to kind of share the great things that we have going on at Westside. You can see that weekly, the education is hard work, so I'm going to tell you a little bit about that. All right. So one of the goals that we have in our strategic plan is to build a supportive culture and climate. And one way that we are working on doing that is by implementing "Capturing Kids' Hearts." So all the faculty and staff was trained during pre-plan, and it was the best training, and everyone was saying this, not just me, the best training that I've been a part of in my 22 years as an educator. It was just wonderful. So I thank you all for allowing us to do that. But as part of that training, we really learned how to focus more on building those strong relationships with our students and empowering them to be advocates for themselves and their learning. And part of that is to implement the Excel model. So here's the Excel model. We have E for engage, X for explore, C for communicating, E for empowering, and L for launching. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about how we are excelling at Westside. All right. So the first E is Excel, and the Excel model is to engage. And this is our wonderful Westside team in all their glory. And they work very hard every day to engage our students and to engage with one another and to be very positive. And one way that we engage with our students is by doing meeting breaks and that we engage with each other. Ms. Hughes, our principal, actually, before school ever starts, like 6:55-ish, she actually comes over for intercom and she gives an encouraging message to the staff every single morning. And it has been very uplifting to everyone. And then our teachers actually meet and greet their students at the door. So it just kind of helps set a positive tone for the day and really let the students know how happy we are that they're at school. So we are Westside. We're the Wildcats. We have 81 staff members, 34 homeroom classes. And you can see there that five of our homeroom classes are actually special education, separate classes. And this is just a breakdown of our demographic data. We have 653 students as of today, and I do want to point out that 60 to 9.19% of our students are economically disadvantaged. All right. So our goal, of course, is to help students become proficient mathematicians and writers. We want that for every single one of our students. And I do think that we are moving in the right direction. When you look at our CC RPI, you can see our content mastery from FY '22 compared to FY '23. And the content mastery score actually comes from our Georgia Milestones data that's our fourth and fifth grade students take at the end of the year. And you can see that we went up 10.3 points in our content mastery from FY '22 to FY '23, from 50.4 to 60.7, and we are very, very, very proud of that growth. In FY '22, we did not get progress points or closing the gaps points because of COVID, but you can see that for FY '23, we did have 78.1 progress points. And I do want to point out that for our ALL students, our English language learners, that 100% of them show language proficiency on the access test. So kudos to our ESON teachers, because that's excellent. And then for closing the gaps, we had a score of 100. And for our readiness, we went up. We increased that score from 65.3 to 79.6. And I really want to point out the literacy score, because it went up from 30.64 to 63.37. So we almost doubled the number of students who are reading on grade level. So we are very proud of that accomplishment. And of course, our goal is to get every single student there. All right. So another part of engaging is giving affirmations. So affirmations are just positive statements that we say to each other to help build each other up. And our teachers do a wonderful job of giving students affirmations every day. But I did want to share this example of one of our fifth grade students who decided that she wanted to give affirmations to teachers. So she made these little notes and she passed them out. I was the luckier recipient of one of them. It just said, like, "I hope you have a great day." A little pink sticky note. And she passed those out, and Ms. Hughes stopped her and asked, like, "Why are you doing this?" you know? And she said, "I just wanted to make teachers happy today." So it was just very good. So you can see that our students are starting to really want to give each other affirmations and thank their teachers. All right. And also, another part of our engagement at Westside for our faculty is that we do "Bless Your Heart" on Fridays. And Ms. Hughes and I say it just as sovereign as we can when we come over to intercom to bless somebody's heart. So at the beginning of the year, we actually gave each faculty member a heart, a little stress ball heart, and it has a number written on it. And each Friday, we draw a number, and whoever's number is strong wins a prize. So the students have become very invested in this. They want their teacher to win. And it's just really, if you could just hear them cheering whenever their teacher wins, they love it. Also, as a system, we adopted a new program called Highlight, and we have often used that. And with Highlight, we, as staff members, can give shout-outs to people who work at our school, but also people who just work in the school system. So there's an example of a shout-out that Dr. Bennett, our dean of students, got from a teacher, just thanking him for all the good things that he does for our school. So we're enjoying that program, too. All right. So the next part of the Excel model is the X, and that's for explore. So we're working really hard to build relationships with each other and with our students. And one way that we're building relationships with each other as a faculty is doing good things celebrations once a month. So we get together, and sometimes we have, you know, a new baby to celebrate or a new marriage. And sometimes we just get together and fellowship. But we're really enjoying that. It gives everyone a chance to talk with people that they don't normally get to interact with. So that's been very nice. And then for our students, and this is part of our "Capturing Kids' Hearts," every day, teachers start out the day by letting students share good things. And those good things, we're really wanting them to learn to appreciate the small good things that happen in their life. So it doesn't have to be, "Oh, I took a trip to Disney World." Because not every kid gets to do something like that. "And I might have gotten a Lego set that I got to be with my brother," or "I got to go stay the night with my Nana." So just little things that they get to celebrate each day. And this was a neat activity that one of our first grade classes did at the beginning of the year. They made me bags. So they brought in a little paper sack, and it had three items in it that represented them that they wanted to share with the class. And you can see them there, sharing those items and telling their classmates more about themselves. All right. And C for communicate. We are really trying to help our students become active listeners and to be really good at communicating with one another, because that's just a great love skill that our kids need to have as citizens in our society. So you can see there that we're doing the little solar active listening skills, like squaring up, sitting up in your desk, nice and calm, straight with your chair pulled up, having an open posture, leaning in slightly to show you're engaged with whoever's speaking to you, making eye contact with people, and responding to people in a respectful manner. And then this is a neat activity that some of our fourth grade students did. And this was actually a "Capturing Kids' Hearts" resource off of the website. And they actually made New Year's resolutions, but they took, each child chose a word from their social contract, which I'll tell you more about in just a second. But they chose a word that they wanted to focus on for themselves to be better at for the year. And you can see there that they forgot being kind, self-love. They decorated it, and they put it on their little resolution tree. And then this other picture is one of our visually impaired students, and he is using his equipment to help him to create his card. And this is about our social contract. That is for us to empower our students, because we want them to be responsible for their own learning and for their behavior. So whenever the, at the beginning of the year, each homeroom built a social contract. So what they did is they came up with a list of words that they thought that they needed to do to treat each other and their teacher in a respectful manner. In the older grades, they actually kind of like divided up. I think I got to the next one. Go back. Never mind. In a minute, there's a picture of them in groups. Once you can see this little group right here, they actually made a list of words to describe how they want to treat each other. Then they came together as a class. Each group shared their words, and they came up with a common set of words for how they wanted to treat each other. And then the teacher uses that throughout the school year to say, "Hey, you know, are we being respectful of each other?" You know, just reminding them of those promises that they made at the beginning of the school year of how they were going to treat each other. And our support chairs, this is a really neat idea that we learned from "Capturing Kids' Hearts." And it's just simply having two people. When you're presenting in front of the class, you can see there that there are two students. They choose who they want to sit in the chair beside them just to help give them some reassurance, because it's really hard to get up in front of other people and speak, no matter how old you are, especially for our little ones. And so even if they have like a problem with something, that other people can chime in and help them. So it's just been a really neat idea that our teachers have embraced to help the kids. And this is another neat idea from "Capturing Kids' Hearts," classroom raters. So this is an example from one of our first grade classes. So a classroom raider is someone is raiding the class. Nobody knows who it is. It's a secret. Is raiding the class to see who is following the social contract. So in this picture, these four students are students that the raider for the day decided had really followed the social contract in a good way. So they got a special prize for the day. And we have a different character trait each month. So this month, it's responsibility. So I want to share with you just a few ways that we are teaching our students at Westside of how to be responsible and take ownership of their learning. And here's our social contract picture I just wanted to show you. So this really shows you how the kids got in groups and created their social contract. You can see that they signed it, consisting promises they're making to one another and their teacher. Even our littles in preschool, they have little handprints there because they can't write their names yet. Some of the classes do like a thumbprint, but just a way to just really have ownership. It's their classroom, their classroom family. These are some other ways that we celebrate our students and our accomplishments. We've got a picture there from actually acknowledging the best behavior and a picture from our reading celebration. We had an AR party. We do soon of the month for students who exhibit the character trait. And then something we did that was really fun this past year, in December, we had a holiday gathering, you can see in the bottom right picture, for our retired educators. We did it after school so that everybody could participate. So our retired educators came. We did a pitch-in. Everyone brought a dish. And we just had the best time catching up with them and fellow shipping. So it was just another way to connect with each other. And there's some other ways that we celebrate accomplishments. Of course, we have assemblies, and we celebrate academic accomplishments. We also have attendance. A little girl had one scooter. We're having perfect attendance. But we also just celebrate our everyday successes. So these are just a few pictures of some of the students who have done a good job on their work during the day, and are just proud of it, and had a picture made. And we support each other. I'm very proud of our little Westside Wildcats of how they support and celebrate the students who are in our separate classes. And you can see there that we have some students who have really taken to visiting that class, going raiding their books, playing Windows for a little bit. It's just been a really neat thing to see how much they care for each other. Another example, my support chair. Then we got our sweet receptionist, Ms. Gail. One of the classes had made her card, just thanking her for all that she does for us every day. So that was very sweet. And then we support the community. We raised money for childhood cancer awareness and for Passionately Pain Day. We partnered with a sanctuary church. They actually gave us many, 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 more than that, gift baskets to give out during the holiday season to our needy families. That was just filled with some really good things that were a great blessing to those families. And then we, as teachers, are responsible for preparing students for college, career, and life. So recently, we had a little career day, because we want our children to dream big. We want them to have big goals. And you can see these are pictures of our littles. We got one there doing her little battle ring of eyes. They're just precious. Firemen doctors, painters. The one in the pink in the middle, her dad's a barber, and she's got her little outfit they've made for her where she can be like her daddy, be a farmer. It's just really sweet. Some more pictures from our career day. I know that you all probably don't remember this, but last year, I told you about a little girl that I was mentoring. And that little girl was the picture in the middle picture with me. So on career day, she dressed up as a principal to be like me, and she wanted to have our picture made. So of course, I said yes, and just made my whole year, because that's how we do it, yes. We do it because our heart's in it, and we want the best for these kids. And we really invest a lot of time and effort into helping these children be the best of them that they can be. So that's just a very special picture to me that I'll keep for the rest of my life, because she's just very precious to my heart. And then I had to include that one on the right, because that's the president with his security. And you should have seen him in the hallway every day, or that day, all day. It was hilarious. And then we got our little doctors over here. So just dream big. So in closing, we do want to thank you for everything that you do to support us, because our success is your success, and we truly do appreciate you. And on behalf of all the Westside faculty, staff, and students, we'd like to say, I sure hope it works.
Oh, no.
Well, it's yours. You'll be okay.
Two-step verification.
No, I didn't get an email. Well, anyway, we had a group of fourth graders, the group that is... It's the group that got the most excited. I mean, we're saying, because their teacher won a prize. And Ms. Hughes and I went down to take it to them. They were just ecstatic that she had won. But it's, we have them saying, "Bless your heart."
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the minutes from last month's meetings. So we'll take a moment to read over those. If there's no changes or amendments, we will place a consent agenda for approval that are monthly financial reports. You will find the first document is the December financials. You'll see the end of month fund equity of $35,463,936.7. The next document is the December comparison report. And you'll see how we compared the previous months in the past. And then the third document is the detailed report. Ms. Bradford, is there any commentary needed for that?
Just wanted to mention that the revenue does contain the governor's retention settlement. We received that in the month of December, so that is included in that revenue base there that we receive.
If you noticed on the comparison report, there was quite a variance there, and so Ms. Bradford clarified that.
Yes, sir.
And then the fourth document is the East Bloss summary. And it looks like a lot of people stayed home to do their Christmas shopping this year. And those really aren't the December numbers. Those would be the November, and then we'll have the December numbers next month. So it'd be interesting to see. All right. If there's no objection, we'll place that on the consent agenda. E-Rate purchases. We have a number of projects here that will be funded using E-Rate funds. And Mr. Logan Evans, our technology director, has worked with his staff to put together these proposals. And if you want to move through those, Logan.
All right. The first one here is Coffey High Middle School needs some wireless access points in the hallway to provide more seamless connectivity throughout the school. These will support, besides learning loss, they'll support the automated robot for cleaning machines. So we have, those set 33 altogether for the high school and middle school. And we had two bids, or actually, three bids submitted, but one of them was for installation only, and came out to Cloud 59 for a total price of $28,35, of which we only paid 15%, so $42.50. And that will go to Cloud 59, who in fact had won all these E-Rate bids. So the next one is the West Green Network. So we looked at the existing network, and with new school project in the planning phases, we put out E-Rate bids to try to, you know, if they're working on that next summer, we can install that equipment. We want to be prepared instead of having to wait another cycle. And so we wanted to upgrade the core switch and the new wing with a CX model of Rubik. It's high-end. All the models are going to the CX. It's a type of protocol they use. And we added 24 access points to get us into Wi-Fi 6, which adds additional channels and bandwidth to provide better and more seamless connectivity and functionality to Chromebooks and all our learning devices. So higher quality. It's the next generation of Wi-Fi. And so this will be our new model as we upgrade throughout the system in the years to come. And then we also want to cover the parking lot, so we have three areas that we'd like to cover, parking lot and Wi-Fi. We had three bids, one installation only, and you can see how much better Cloud 59 came in. It came in about $70,000 cheaper. So the premium price, and they get more and more specific to that. $79,000, we'll pay $11,939.5, category two, 15% local funds. This one here, I'm very excited about. We looked at this product called a Rubik Clear Pass. It folds onto our network and gives you detailed visibility into all the devices, all the connections, all the security going on in the network. It really puts a magnifying glass and can help you with installs, but also protect you. So say Mr. Dowers came with a laptop with a virus and tried to plug in, it would catch that immediately and then offer him a remediation step. And once his laptop is fixed, it could then get on the network. And so it'll provide a lot of support to the network administrator, but also on future projects as we can things onto the network. It's a MIBS, which is a managed service through E-Rate. When we first looked for quotes on this, finding it outright, it was about $82,000. And besides that, it was very complex to install and configure. And so we found a way to do that through a managed service. It cost us $150,000 for the first year, which cost us $22,500. And each additional year, we put in an option for two voluntary extensions on the contract, and that drops, then drops down to $9,000 a year. It's an ongoing service. The contracts are the, RFP was very lengthy. And this will actually put us at even better on the cutting edge of security, and we'll end up being a model in our area. This piece of equipment is what everybody wants, but they haven't figured out how to fit it into the budget. And so I think we've done, we looked at a model, I think it was Rockdale County, figuring this out. So working with a Cloud 59 partner, he'll set this up. He'll own, it actually rented from HP and then provide digital policies for us that will allow us to better manage and secure our network. Excellent. Excellent. Came to add to the network. And then the system switches, we had a need. We found Lou from CHS Ag Shop. We had a couple swap outs to do, and then upgrades to softball complex, Jardine Stadium, and baseball complex. And so with the improvements we've made at Jardine, we found that we needed, we'd like to add in some ruggedized switches, because they're not climate-controlled areas. They heat, moisture, temperature changes and all that. And so we built a new network in Jardine to support the digital ticketing. And these switches will help to get it working right. So in the future, we can add security cameras, more Wi-Fi access, and better wire out that stadium for future projects. Then in the softball and baseball, we've ordered these smaller switches for security cameras and Wi-Fi and other connection. And then the CHS Ag Shop, we actually upgraded to an end model switch that provides some additional ports that allow you to do even more advanced work with high-end security cameras and additional Wi-Fi capabilities, more power through, and house. So top-of-the-line equipment. And we received nine bids for that. One Accord Technologies came in the low end of $36,000. However, they did not offer the type of equipment that we run in our network now for the different brand of Rocky equipment. So we chose to go with our Rubik to keep the, if you go with a different type of equipment, you have to have a whole nother management. So we wanted to keep it all into one management. Well, they do that. So the licensing, that came out to $50,000, of which we paid $7,557.90. And those are the four projects on the plan for E-Rate.
What was that total?
I didn't actually total all those up initially. 22, so that's right at 30.
So $50,360.
$50,360.
Any other questions?
Wireless access to, is that like a, I don't know if it's not fine. Is that like the age type of stuff we're trying to just cover in a home?
Well, those are like your Wi-Fi. Just waiting there. Yes, Wi-Fi access points. And so at the high school and middle school specifically, we have them in every classroom, but they have to be toned down. We decrease, well, they decrease the volume, which makes it so they don't overlap one another, and then it makes Chromebooks, so they don't roam. And so we considered turning them up, which might get better coverage in the hallway, but it could decrease solid connectivity in the Chromebooks, which is important for learning. So we thought the best option would be to cover those hallways there. Now those, that bid does include installation and require additional data cabling, so that's all included in that package pricing. Now on the West Green, I thought it'd be worth the note. We are going to attempt to reuse several of the switches there, and if we need to fill in access... And if we need to fill in access points, we can have, we may not have that twenty-four maybe right on the edge of what we need. So we'll have all those rest from the old school, and we'll be able to file where we need, and then have those as spares throughout the district as well. So that old equipment is still functional, and it'll be used as needed as we fill in gaps.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. The next item on the agenda is furniture purchase. And we have Ambrose Elementary School that I'm recommending we purchase. This is equipment, or this is furniture for classrooms at Ambrose Elementary School. And this would be using SIR funding. And then also, we have Indian Creek Furniture Purchase. This is classroom furniture that would be purchased using SIR three funding. And then the middle school media center furniture would be purchased using L4 Georgia Are there any questions? We didn't ask the principals to be here tonight to describe that.
This, we've actually already talked about this when we did the budgeting of the funds, didn't we? We go to our website and see how it's allocated out.
Yes, sir. I think we've discussed this furniture purchases before. All right. Vehicle purchase. Maintenance has a need, a real need for a new truck. And so Mr. Geyer assisted us as transportation director with these purchases. So, Mr. Geyer, you want to describe the purchases here?
Yes, they are used vehicles. We tell it to go used, they under the hundred thousand dollar threshold for a bid because you can't, it takes on the older truck and good truck anymore, take about two years. So, for research, we found the nineteen, two thousand nineteen was under eight thousand miles for thirty-eight thousand dollars. It does have, I did check the Carfax, does have, it does not have a warranty because of the two thousand nineteen, but it's very, very clean, very nice vehicle.
And then the other vehicle is a maintenance van.
Yeah, the same process as that truck. Scott, who does the heating and air conditioner, a lot of kitchen repair, he'd rather have a van versus a truck, keep all his equipment in. So, for research, we did find a twenty-twenty-one, around thirty thousand miles for thirty-five thousand. It does have warranty on the Carfax, and a clean Carfax. Both these vehicles were rental vehicles, because they're very clean, very nice.
Those will be purchased using East Bloss funds. Any other questions, comments? And then transportation department, we have a couple of, several buses there to declare surplus. Buddy, since you're here, you want to walk us through that?
These buses, the first one there are a rear-end bus, and you spend more money trying to keep it going than what it's worth. The other three have issues that we cannot get parked for anymore. So we're taking the stuff that we can use off these buses and we found the best to build a surplus.
Are there any other questions about the vehicles to purchase, and then the surplus, and the bus purchase? So we've got a request for bus purchase here too. And those are twenty-four models? That is a twenty-four model.
Twenty-four models. It's a fifteen-passenger bus, a non-CDL driver can use it. We have three male states on the road all the time. So we kind of held back waiting for this one to come up so we could purchase it. It'll be here around September.
Great. Are there any questions about that? Most of that paid with the state, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Is Bluebird?
Yes, sir. We bought that big group of nine buses, we would actually get a ten, we held off on this one, waiting on this to come out. But at that time, they were not offering the bus.
Yes, 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 sir. There, we have eighty-eight thousand one hundred and ten dollars left on those buses to put
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the local retention supplement. Last month, the governor announced, about a week before Christmas, I think it was, it's the middle of the month, that the state would be providing a one thousand dollar, one-time supplement, retention supplement for teachers and staff and schools. And so we started working on a plan to be able to carry this out. We're making payroll tomorrow, so all of the employees will get their full paycheck tomorrow. And so then our payroll director will go back, and then she will begin processing the one thousand dollar check for all employees, starting after tomorrow when payroll gets. And so our plan will be to provide all the employees the one thousand dollars on December thirty-first. So they'll all receive the one thousand dollar.
January.
January, January, I'm sorry, January. So that'll be the cycle that we follow. And I did not announce that. I wanted to meet with y'all first before we sent something out. But I've got an email prepared to send out tomorrow morning telling all the employees just that, that their payroll's hit tomorrow and the thousand dollars will get on the thirty-first. And so this will be all employees, full-time employees that are employed by us and contracted custodians. So, and the only group, we can't, we can't do substitutes. It just, it's, you've got, one sub may work one time a year, one may work ten days a year, and it's just, there's no way to do substitutes. So it'll be everybody, the workforce, except for substitutes. I can't do board members. St. Pearson. Was there anything else that needed to be said regarding that?
No, sorry, that's it. I plan to be there on January thirty-first.
All right.
I did have one, I texted you a question earlier, is how that breaks out, what's going to be deducted from that thousand? Is it going to be just their taxes, or is it going to be TRS, state-owned benefit?
No, no, no TRS, this is not TRS eligible. So that will not be in this check, or no health insurance. But it will have the seven point six five percent factor, which is your social security Medicare, which is going to be seventy-six dollars and fifty cent for all employees. And then the tax piece will be based on how they complete their WFO form for their tax
Any other questions about that? And we're very thankful to the governor's office and state legislators who approved this, and so we'll go forward with it. All right, and thank you, local board, for funding the positions that are funded. And I think that is important for people to understand, that not all the positions, because when the state pulls their report, they'll pull it off of what's called the CPI report. And the CPI report includes, they just fund the positions that are funded on the CPI report. They won't fund all of the positions we have. So it does, there is a local contribution that goes into this beyond what the state provides. So, you know, thank you all for providing this for all the employees. Do you have a ballpark on what that is?
Yes, we're estimating around eleven hundred and forty-five employees ballpark, so that would be approximately four hundred thousand that we would have to fund.
Local retention supplement, Action Pack. If you remember, the city received their community development block grant last year, and they dedicated it to the additions at the Ed Stark Building. And we agreed to pay a hundred thousand and then possibly fifty more in contingency funds, so a hundred and fifty that the board would do if they took the whole amount. Well, they put the project out for bid, and it came back over what they had budgeted and over what they had access to. So the county has agreed to put in two hundred thousand towards the project. The city has agreed to put in two hundred thousand towards the project. And since we had already, y'all had approved a hundred and fifty, I'm asking the board to come back tonight and approve fifty thousand additional, so that then therefore we would match what the city and county has done. So is there any questions about that? I'm not crazy, but I was crazy about a hundred and fifty. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right. It will be, it will be lost. It's a construction project. It's a capital improvement. All right. Board review of code of ethics and conflict of interest and operating protocol. Each year, we're required to review this, and this has been on the agenda. So you've had an opportunity to review the board code of ethics and the board conflict of interest, and the board operating protocol, and the board code of ethics conflict of interest. And so I would just say I appreciate this board and your professionalism and the way you manage the school district and the board governance. And I think that this board is a model for many other boards. And so in your leisure time, if you've not already reviewed all those policies, then please, please review the policies. And they are accessible to you, and you've already had access to them. So are there any questions about those policies? And we will have a retreat, and that was perfect placement on the agenda, because at our retreat, we will probably discuss those concepts also and board governance. And so I wanted to go ahead and get a couple of dates in front of you, so you could be looking at your calendar, possibly March first or March twenty-second is an option for board retreat. And this would be budget. We are beginning to have budget meetings with principals already. We've got those scheduled for later this month and into next month. And so we'll be meeting with principals and going over staffing and revenue projections and expenditure projections. And so we'll lead a retreat. So you don't have to give me an answer right now, but I did want to go ahead and get those potential dates. And I guess if we have conflict and we need to look at other dates, we can. But these work for us at this point. All right. And then school calendar. We have several options. We just created some drafts of the school calendar to get in front of you and before we send it out to the staff. If you want to describe those in general, Ms. Miller?
So, so all three calendars, there's three drafts, and A being a C. All three calendars have ninety days first semester, ninety days second semester, a hundred and eighty student days, a hundred and ninety teacher days. I looked at starting post-planning as late as possible and school as late as possible. So you'll see that, I said post-planning, pre-planning. Pre-planning starts on the thirty-first of July on two of them, and the thirtieth on one of them. There's the normal Labor Day, October Day, the October holiday, either a three-day weekend or a four-day weekend, depending on which calendar you're looking at, is also the weekend that there won't be a football game in the ball. And so that will, that means everybody will be off. Then at Thanksgiving, of course, we have our week and then a day on each of those calendars. And we normally do an early release day that day anyway, but for this year's calendar, we put a day out. Then at Christmas, we have ten days out, two full weeks. Two professional learning days in January, which is a request at the secondary level because of scheduling and whatnot, that helps the transition for them. And it's not as important in elementary, but for secondary, it's very important. Then spring break. Of course, February, some have a three-day weekend, some have a four-day weekend, just depending on which calendar. Then, of course, a week at spring break. All three calendars have the same spring break. And then the one, I reached out to the high school because I had persons static since I've been back, that they would like to have graduation practice the last week of school because it's kind of difficult sometimes to get those students back once their school's out. And then some folks are off contract and at graduation, and yada, yada, yada. So all three calendars have school ending on Friday, the last week of school is on Friday, Thursday, and then graduation is on Saturday. And then Memorial Day is on Monday, the twenty-sixth, and then post-planning is after that. So the only era that I have is, I guess, in my putting things in these boxes, there at the bottom, it kind of tells you the holidays and when they start and that kind of stuff. On Drastic, there's a winter holiday on February eleventh, and then President's Holiday on Monday, February, or February fourteenth, and it's the winter holiday. And February seventeenth is the President's Holiday. So that winter holiday is on the calendar up there, but it's not typed out in that box. So I did want to draw your attention to that. But these have not been put before the faculty and staff yet for the schools. We just wanted to share them with you all and see if you had any input before I adjust them and send them out to the school for their input. This is always quite a feat, every year that I've done it, but anyway.
Any questions or comments about it?
I think they look pretty good, I guess.
We'll survey the staff. We're going to get feedback from the staff. Our plan was to come back at the February meeting and ask board to approve a calendar.
Yeah, I will send them out to the staff and let them have some input, and then we'll bring back one in February, the one that is the most, I would say, better.
It has been better since we sent them out. I mean, people are going to argue no matter what, but it's been a lot better since we allowed them a choice.
I mean, I have, you know, I've gotten input from them before, and before the calendars were ever developed. And I would love to give them everything they want, but in actuality, we have to have school. And you just can't have, you can't start school at a certain time and have all the holidays that they would like to have. There's only so many days from start to Christmas, and from the time we come back after Christmas to the time we get out. So anyway.
I think there's, I counted them up one time, I think since nineteen eighty-three, I graduated high school, there's been an additional, I think it's twelve days, whether it's been a federal holiday added, or we used to have three days at Thanksgiving, we used to have three days at spring break. You know, you had Friday, Monday maybe, but you just didn't have the week-long. You know, you had your Friday, Monday maybe, but you, you just didn't have the week long.
Yeah, and I've looked at calendars from around our area, school calendars. I've investigated from some in Atlanta all the way to Pearson. And, I'm speaking of Pearson. And there's some things on some of those calendars that are popular, but they don't, they will have a hundred and ninety days, but they don't always have a hundred and eighty days. And traditionally, the state says a typical school year is a hundred and eighty student days, student learning days. And so that's how I try to deal with the calendars. And I try really hard to balance the days in first semester and second semester because whereas it doesn't really matter to elementary, high school it does matter. And so anyway, these are balanced and they all have a hundred and eighty student and a hundred and ninety teacher.
We had, and I'm sure I've told all y'all this story before, but when we first started with governing councils, I had one to just put in, we're going to look at these calendars, we're going to look at it, we're going to see if we can't do a better job. So Allison brought out all the dates and everything that had to fit in with testing and this and that. And after about an hour, they just threw their hands up, said, we found the calendar. And you start trying, yeah, when you start trying to mesh all that together, it's, it's.
And there are testing windows too, that you have to take into consideration and make sure between spring break and the end of the year, you have enough time to get your testing in and do your retesting if there's any retesting, that kind of thing. So.
And that's the thing, people don't see that.
The university system going to semester instead of quarters has been, that's had a big impact on, on managing. You know, timing the testing, timing, like if you've got an early graduate, you couldn't do that on quarter system that good and align it.
The systems who are having longer fall breaks, they're starting pre-planning mid-July and school either end of July or first of August. So we try to start our school a little bit later. And so, you know, there's, as I said, there's only so many days to the start date to getting out of Christmas and from January to end of the year. So here they are.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I know you put a lot of time into that. Thank you. And so we will come back at the next board meeting and we'll go back to the board. Selection of two thousand twenty-four Board of Education Officers. Nomination for chair.
I'll nominate Ms. Block, sir, as the vice chair.
Anybody, yeah?
Yeah.
I'm going to be the vice chair. I'm going to nominate Mr. Preston for vice chair.
Same.
What do you have with that?
I'm just glad I was here. Last time y'all did it, I wasn't here. Being on the church committee. He's not here, let's make him chairman.
That's funny. All right, well, thank y'all. And thank you, Mr. Jaworski, for your service. You had two consecutive years as, as board chairman. A lot of great academic achievement, a lot of success as a school system. As you as board chair, so.
State championship.
That's right, state championship. That's right. You're going to the executive session? Yes, sir. I will need an executive session to discuss personnel and the employment evaluation or dismissal of employee or reprimand of employee or whatnot. But so personnel and then also real estate will need to be discussed in executive session, issues related to real estate. And the motion, Board of Education session.
We've re-exit to executive session to discuss.
Okay, it's time to turn.